Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's regular meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask the Treasurer to please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here, thank you. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three on the agenda, Board Meeting Minutes, and this is for discussion and approval of the July 9th Board Meeting Minutes, and we do this by consensus. Are there any questions, concerns, corrections on the minutes?
I just would like to tell my fellow board members and the public that I fully support the action that was taken at the last meeting. And I was unable to be here because I was with my daughter at a dance competition.
We thought about Skyping you in, but that wasn't legal for you to vote that way. Thank you. I hear no other comments and I hear no corrections, so we'll move on to District Highlights and Recognitions, which is item four on your agenda. And this evening, it is our great pleasure to recognize the Outstanding Student Achievement Award for the R.A. Horn Outstanding Student. And I am going to turn this over to Tracy first and let Tracy have a couple of things to say. You can go first. You're the board member.
Want to share with me?
Sure.
You go ahead and then I'll...
Board, guests, this past spring Walnut Middle School student Drew Manteniques was nominated by an intervention specialist, Kelly Ferguson, for the R.A. Horn Outstanding Achievement Award. The R.A. Horn Award is presented to one exemplary special education student from each of Ohio's sixteen state support team regions. This award was established twenty-six years ago by the Ohio Department of Education, named in honor of the late Dr. Raymond A. Horn. This prestigious award recognizes students' remarkable performance. Drew was awarded the R.A. Horn from Region 11 because of his outstanding accomplishments in the area of self-advocacy. In the words of his nominator, "Over the course of Drew's educational career, he has demonstrated perseverance, flexibility, and maturity. As a student that has been faced with many educational challenges, Drew has proved that he can overcome obstacles that stand in the way of his goals. He is a very driven student that is aware of what support he needs in order to be successful in the classroom. Drew includes himself in any discussion that pertains to his IEP, as well as keeps a copy of the document in his binder. He is familiar with his goals and accommodations. However, he does not use this document as a crutch, but as a resource to aid him in his education. He has shown maturity in approaching his teachers with poise and reminding them of his accommodations. He utilizes his supplemental time greatly and continues to achieve academic success." Drew was unable to attend the award ceremony this past June due to a previous obligation with Boy Scouts, so it is now my privilege and honor to present Drew Manteniques with the 2014 R.A. Horn Outstanding Achievement Award.
Did you take a minute and introduce some of your guests? It looks like you have some family here and maybe some teachers in the presence. If you could put you on the spot to help us out do that?
While everyone's leaving and seated, I just want to state that Ray Horn was a wonderful... I worked with him at the State Department of Education for a number of years. He was a very committed man for education, and this is a wonderful award to be able to give someone from Westerville. So I'm proud of him too. Thanks a lot and congratulations to you.
He's already gone.
But anyway.
And Jim, congratulations to you and the whole family. It's a lot more fun to be out there watching your grandstanding award than it is to be presenting, isn't it? Jim Dowrimple was principal at Westerville South.
Okay, thanks.
And Ray Horn was fantastic.
He was a great guy.
And yes, and the Manteniques both teach in our district. This is...
This is family.
This is great. We're going to move on to reports. We have one report this evening, the Westerville Comprehensive Plan, and we are to be joined tonight by Westerville's Assistant City Planner. Welcome.
Thank you. Is this good? Madam President and Board Members, my name is Kimberly Sharp, and I'm the Deputy Director of Planning for the City of Westerville and a Westerville School District parent and Tracy's neighbor. It's great living in a town like this. So, the City of Westerville is taking on the task of creating a comprehensive community plan. The last comprehensive plan was done in 1962, so of course a few things have changed since 1962, and lots of people have done many planning things since then. We know that the Parks and Rec and Open Space Plan is done, and the school system does their annual and five-year planning mechanisms, but this is a comprehensive plan which will look at land use, transportation, the natural environment, our resources, people, jobs, housing. What's our growth projections over the next twenty years, looking at five years, ten years, and twenty years? What does it mean to us as a community as a whole? And no one can predict the future, but just like a business plan, you want to make your best educated guess, and you want to think about those strategic investments that make a really big difference in your future. And that's what this comprehensive community plan is about. Regarding that, we just wanted to make sure we invited the board to a three-day planning workshop. Now, that doesn't mean come to all three days. We're just making these times and dates available to really get the community to say, "This is what's important to us. This is what's really important for us to preserve, and this is where we think it makes sense for the community to grow, or it needs a little TLC," or whatever it's really important to them. So the three-day workshop for the community plan will be held August 26th, 27th, and 28th. August 26th is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Westerville South High School in the Commons. August 27th is an all-day open house. You just drop in when it's convenient for you, for ten minutes or an hour, or whatever you want, at the American Legion from 9:00 a.m. till about 5:00 p.m. August 28th, again, is at the American Legion in the evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to say, "This is what we heard from the community. Did we hear you right?" And the goal is to come out of this working on three potential growth scenarios, meaning our community as a whole could grow this way, or this way, or this way, and what does it mean in measurements and metrics? And I know you guys work with those all the time. So this is important for us to think about as a community. We really want to hear back from community members, all age groups, all income brackets, all cultures. It's really important we work together as a community on this. So I'm leaving these cards in the back, and we'll be passing them out. Maureen Trimble, who was a grandmother here tonight, is also... We have a citizen advisory team of twenty-three community volunteers, so we actually have representation from Westerville City School District. Thank you Suzanne Kyle. Otterbine, I know I'm going to forget a couple of people. Saint Anne, Ohio Health, quite a few local business owners, the Chamber of Commerce. There's definitely representation on this citizen advisory team, and I appreciate their expertise and their professionalism. We'll be working closely with them over this fifteen-month planning process. And at this time, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Questions or comments? Kim, I just have one comment. I very much appreciate you being here. I appreciate what it says. I appreciate your willingness and your understanding of the need to involve the schools, and it makes good sense to me, and we do all work together for the community. So thank you very much for being here, and I'll be there.
Thank you. It'll be good to see you.
Thanks. Moving on to public comments. The first portion of public comments are for comments that deal with items that are on the agenda for action this evening. We have no one signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to item seven, which are the financials. And 7.01 is the resolution to approve the financial reports and investments as of June 2014. The financial report lists all funds ending June 2014. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, I will turn it over to Bart.
Madam President, excuse me. Madam President, members of the board, the financial report is for June 2014, which is the last month of fiscal year 2014. Year-to-date receipts, $162,387,000. Year-to-date expenditures was $137,852,000. We have an unencumbered balance of $39.6 million. That's for the general fund only. All funds year-to-date receipts was $213,600,000. Year-to-date expenditures was $184,247,000, when all funds unencumbered balance is $56.1 million. I'll work up a better, for what will be called a better forecast, or I guess a report for you at the later meeting. This is just kind of preliminary. We do have state auditors, just so you know, coming in. I think they're here tomorrow already for to audit fiscal year 14's books, so if you see them around or get some phone calls, there's always disclosures. You guys always have to sign with them, so I'll call you, for those of you who are new, and tell you what to expect. You'll get a letter from them. You have to, you know, it's basically a fraud notice if you know of any fraud, stuff like that. So you'll be hearing from our state auditors, even though you've been on the board six months. It has been six months of fiscal year 14, so you are required to answer those questions. So I will give you those as well, that information. But again, they're going to be here probably for three to four weeks, if not longer. They sort of stay here a while. So we'll make sure you're available. Yeah, there's reasons to be nice sometimes, but they can make your life a lot harder than they have to be. And then also for the financial report, I gave everybody a copy for the... We have a delegate appointment, for those of you... Dr. Baker, Mr. Baker, you know what that is, and Dr. French, you know. We basically, the board will appoint a delegate and an alternate to the Ohio School Boards Conference. I gave each of you a packet that kind of shows what that is and what form. That'll be up to the board to choose who that is. The delegate will be at the representative of the board at the School Board Conference. I think, Dr. French, you were there last year. I know you guys try to rotate this a little bit, but you don't have to. So we'll try to put this on at the next meeting as a delegate and an alternate for you guys to sign a four-tex resolution, which we have to submit. Also, just for planning purposes, the Ohio School Boards Conference is November. I think it's 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, is the Sunday early bird. So we'll be sending information out to you, if you haven't gotten it already, of who's going to go and different information. We'll take care of that as well, so you'll be getting that information from our office. And I think that's it.
Comments or questions? I hear none. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the financials have been approved. Move on to item eight on the agenda. This is the Personnel Consent Agenda, and I believe Mr. Hershizer is going to walk us through this this evening. But could I have a motion, please, as he comes to the podium?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you both. With that, are you ready, Mark?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The consent agenda tonight has several items. We have some resignations, including Michael Carr, an assistant principal at Central, who has taken a principalship in another district. We have some teachers, including our Dean of Students, Tony Ashbrook, who has taken an assistant principal position in another district. We have a couple change of assignments, as Dr. Kellogg had shared regarding some of the changes administratively, with a couple of our principals moving to coordinator positions, full-time coordinator positions. We have some one-time payments contractually with our 138 and some of the coaching work that they do, as well as some nurses' training and some curriculum instruction items, and then our fab lab equipment training. We have some employment. We have eleven teachers on this agenda and one administrator. Amy Tankovich will be moving from an ESL facilitator position to the assistant principal position at Heritage. Mr. Schmetzer, Dr. Kellogg, and I, we've had some conversation today. We will have some additional hires on our next agenda. We still are in the final steps of hiring our staff for next year. And then the final item I have, without question, is the most difficult I've had to present to the board in my twenty-plus years at Central Office, and that is the passing of Mr. Jakowski. Prior to coming to Westerville, Kurt worked in Kettering, Xenia, Clinton, Massey, in the Greenfield School Districts as a coach, teacher, and administrator. Kurt was hired in Westerville to be an assistant principal at Walnut Springs and Heritage, which he did from 2000 to 2002. From 2002, 2003, he was the associate principal at Westerville North. From 2003 to 2007, he was the principal at Westerville North, at which time he was diagnosed with cancer, and he was moved to the district office and filled the administrative project manager position. And then from 2009 through 2014, Kurt served as the Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations. And as you know, Kurt passed late Sunday evening on July 20th.
I know that was very hard for you. Comments or questions?
At first, recognizing Kurt Jakowski, it really hit the community hard. I actually phoned my son in Austin, Texas, and he was a student at Westerville North, and Mr. Jakowski was his principal. So definitely a great loss to the community. Just a quick question as it relates to resignation and licensed staff. Any immediate concerns about coverage or services as it relates to any of these resignations and getting them filled in time for the school year?
We do have a couple that we're continuing to work through, so I'm not panicking yet, but it has been wonderful having Mr. Schmetzer here to assist us in the process. We do have a couple that are hard to fill positions. We do have some positions where we have some candidates that we're in the process of going through that. We're just over two weeks away, and so, yes, we're concerned, but at this point, not panicking.
First, Mark, I am so deeply sorry for your loss. And secondly, I would say... Kurt was a warrior through and through, and he will be greatly missed.
Other comments?
I too will miss Kurt, in spite of me probably being the person that asked him the most questions. But it was a wonderful service, and the community that turned out was unbelievable. I really know that we're all going to miss him. His shoes will never be filled the same, and so we just have to move on as a school community and certainly appreciate our retired help that's coming in and volunteer, not volunteering, but yes, volunteering to help us out. And so, that's wonderful. And it was such a shock, honestly, when Dr. Kellogg called me. I was quite shocked. And then turning to a question on, since I just can't totally give up asking questions. 8.08, that item, if you could take a look at that and explain that a little bit to us. It is a one-town payment. As I'm looking at it, there's several things on there, but the most concern comes from my looking at how we're retraining math teachers for, and tell me if I'm wrong, I'm seeing us retraining them to teach the Common Core and to work on the testing and so on. And I just feel really bad that, you know, the teachers have to go through this, and then we're paying them about $10,075, I added up, to reteach them to teach math, to basically teach to the test. And I do hope that Common Core, as everyone knows, I'm not a supporter of Common Core, especially math and the English part of it. So, am I reading that right, that that's actually what we're doing? We're working with teachers, they're getting like three to four hours of retraining?
My understanding and in talking with the people in our curriculum shop is they are being trained, they are going through training, training regarding math and the curriculum that has been adopted in the direction that the district's moving. So, as is not uncommon with all of our curricular areas as we go through the curriculum adoption process, part of that includes professional development and training moving forward before the school year.
Just clarification. This is, while our local curriculum reflects Common Core standards in math, it is our local curriculum developed in conjunction with our teachers. And then the training includes both understanding of our local curriculum, as well as the new materials, in some of these cases, new materials that come with it. So, that's not to divorce our local curriculum so wholly from Common Core, but it's our local curriculum that they're gaining understanding of. And to the test piece, absolutely correct, their understanding of what's on these new assessments is vital, because the instructional implications and then the outcomes for students and for us at district are important. My own thoughts about the level of testing, but that's essentially what it is, so...
I think, Mark, I would echo what people have said about the loss that we as a district would feel, and I think mostly that you and the folks that worked, you know, side by side, next to offices, joked around with, went out to lunch with. It's one thing to do the work together, that's great. It's another thing to journey in life together. That's a bigger thing, that's outside the office and laughing and just connecting. So my prayers, if I can... My prayers really are for the folks in this level of the building that will pass by an office and miss certain laughter, and certainly for his wife and kids, and just a reminder to the community that it's an intense pain right now, but it's in the next weeks and months that we need to make sure that we are still journeying with the family. So, he made an impact on us, just a good guy that I wish I had gotten to know better, wish I had had that opportunity, but a really powerful service and just a real testament to somebody that in his young life, and I consider forty-eight to be a young life, made an impact in people's lives. And that's beyond the work. That's critical.
You mentioned the service. It was a wonderful service, wasn't it? And one of the things that I thought was particularly moving was the progression of the football team. The Warhawks football team, as they progressed into the service. That was really something to see. You know, it was really interesting to me because, you know, I guess cognitively I knew that Kurt came in 2000, but still, when I read that, I had kind of a shock. I said, "No, he was here so much longer," because it was, he was so much a part of us and part of everything that we did, that it felt like he had been here longer than me, which is a really long time. But it just seemed that he'd been part of our lives forever, and it was just shocking to find out that had been only fourteen years. This has been a season of loss within the district with Kurt and with Cindy. We also, very recently, you may not be aware of this, we lost two individuals who had retired from the system. Judy Musselman, who was a teacher at Heritage, left us... Her funeral was actually the same day as Kurt's service. And then last month, in the middle of June, we lost Don Manley, who was at one time at Walnut Springs. And when you look at all of that loss in just such a short time, in what is truly a family, it is indeed a season of loss. The good thing is about all of that, exactly what Father Gwinner said, at Kurt's service, love always wins. And it does, and it will. Would you call the roll, please, Mr. Griffith?
Before I do that, Mark, you want to mention the Scholarship Fund while we have...
Ah, good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. The family has, with Mr. Griffith's assistance, started a Kurt Jakowski Memorial Scholarship Fund. For anyone that would like to contribute to that, we have information out. I know Mr. Veebrant will have some stuff on the website. There were things available at the service. The intent is, the family would like to offer and provide a scholarship to one graduate from each of the three high schools annually. And so that, as you indicated, Dr. Nestor Baker, while here in this community for a short period of time, it seems like he was here forever, and his family from the Dayton area truly believe that this is his home, and there was no question as to where his service was going to be and where the family was going to stay. And so they would like to pay back to this community for all this community's given back to them.
Thank you.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The Personnel Consent Agenda has been approved. Item nine is policy consent. There is nothing on our agenda this evening, nor is there anything under item 10, which is old business, nor is there anything under new business, item 11, which takes us to item 12, which is standing business this evening, and we do have a handful of items under standing business. The first, 12.01, donations. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions about the donations this evening?
Always a big thank you, you know? It's just huge that people keep caring enough about the district to go above and beyond. So, just a big thank you to all of these folks.
Bart, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the donations have been approved, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution to approve admission and waiver of tuition for a foreign exchange student. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Dr. Kellogg, is there anything you would like to say?
Just that we'd like to, we are recommending approval resolution for this student. I'm going to do my best on the name, semi-sorry, which sounds, I won't make a bad joke, from Finland, from the Youth for Understanding Program. I think this takes us to ten foreign exchange students for this coming school year between the three high schools, so to those community members who are willing to open their homes to them and bring them in, we appreciate it. we appreciate it. On the flip side of that, I was, as a member of the Westerville Sunrise Rotary Club, who is a very active exchange program, I got the opportunity to hear from six or seven of our students who've been on short and long-term exchanges, going in the opposite direction through Rotary, and some of them, two of which did a year in Brazil and some other short trips. And it was really interesting and fascinating to hear how much they grew and how much they appreciated that support. So, just a reminder that, as much as we're accepting students, we also have students going out on the other end, and I think it's a wonderful experience for both sides. So, just recommend approval of this resolution.
Comments or questions? Mr. Griffith, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The Resolution to Approve Admission and Waiver of Tuition for a Foreign Exchange Student has been approved. 12.03 is the Resolution to Amend the Academic Calendar for the 2014-15 School Year for the Addition of Two Waiver Days. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, this is part two of what Jen Knapp was discussing with us at, I believe, our last meeting. Dr. Kellogg, is there anything you would like to say about this?
No, just that we already started our planning for the waiver days, once the ODE came through with the approval. I think we have a robust and focused plan together to work with our staff on increasing their professional skills as we move forward in a time of great change. So, our focus this year will continue on new content. We'll focus on instructional strategies, and we're going to begin focusing on the new assessments, understanding not only the implications of the new assessments, what they look like, but also starting to prepare ourselves for the required online portion of the new state assessments. And I anticipate bringing the board a game plan for how we intend on rolling out the online assessments in conjunction with the opportunities for paper pencil that the states open more of. So, our parents and our students and our staff and the board have been understanding how we intend on aligning our resources around the requirement to have online testing in the new tests. So, a big year for us, but I think these two days will add a great deal of support for our staff.
Thank you. For those of you who are listening or watching us, we are talking about waiver days on September the 12th of 2014 and February 6th of 2015. Are there comments or questions? Hearing none?
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The waiver days have been approved. 12.04 is a Resolution Nominating Cindy Crowe posthumously to the All Ohio School Board. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, we have before us the opportunity to nominate Cindy Crowe, posthumously, as a member of the All Ohio School Board. The All Ohio School Board is chosen every year. There are five members of the school board, and there is one member chosen from each region. And the criteria are that the member must be obviously concerned for the education and welfare of children, make the necessary time commitments, invest in their own ongoing and service development, practice good decision-making, work with their fellow board members as a team, and follow the Ohio School Board Association Code of Ethics. As we look at those requirements, I know as I read them, I have no problem at all seeing Cindy Crowe as a recipient of the All Ohio School Board. You should know that OSBA recently changed their policy to allow, very recently, changed their policy to allow for the posthumous nomination, or the nomination, posthumously, of a board member. And I very much hope that the board concurs with my thinking that this is something that we should indeed nominate Cindy for. Any comments or questions that you have about it?
I'd just say, I wanted to thank the Ohio School Board for being wise enough to know that policy sometimes stands in the way of common sense, and to make this change for a lady that we all consider friend, and colleague, and a lot more. I thank them for doing that, and this is, this is an honor, but she was an honorable person, so she deserves it.
Bart, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. We will nominate Cindy Crowe for the All Ohio School Board. Moving on to Item 13, Public Comments. Our second portion of public comment is reserved for comments for the good of the order. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker, and we do have one individual signed up tonight, and that's Peg Duffy.
Over the last couple of years, on a regular basis, several of us have received anonymous letters. Now, you can't read it, but you can see, it's one of those that said, print side, you really want to print this? Well, it's printed outside the margins and that sort of thing. They're always this long. As best those of us who receive these letters can determine, and only two of us received the most recent one, we believe that the writer understands a lot of what goes on with the school board, either watches or listens to, whatever, the school board meetings. We don't think the person has attended any meetings, identifies as a senior citizen. We can't figure out whether it's male or female, so I will use the inclusive gender and say that it's a male. A lot of good questions asked, but some of them, I feel that if this person who is following things is a little bit confused, then we have an obligation to explain. If the person isn't clear, then probably others aren't also. Okay, one question in this current letter is about how many people cashed in their vacation bonuses. And my understanding is that that happens at retirement, so if in board comments, somebody would explain that, clarify that. Another question regarding public records. There were several requests in this letter about, would somebody make a public records request? I'd like to know this, that, or the other. Well, rather than my giving the explanation, from my numerous experiences making public records requests, I will allow Mr. Griffith, the official keeper of the records, to explain what needs to be done, what constitutes a record, and all of that sort of thing. He is the one. It's not up to the board. It's a public record. He knows it is, and he gets the information out. The individual did ask one question that's been on my mind for a while. Board members are appointed to liaison positions, but we don't hear from you very often as liaisons. Now, as I see the liaisons, you are our eyes on a topic, an area, to observe. Now, I don't mean to misconstrue this as micromanagement. It's not that. But we are expecting the board members, who are looking at different parcels, components of what happens in the school district, to be paying attention. Maybe they ask questions for clarification. Maybe they come to board and summarize what they have asked. We use this liaison concept successfully for many, many years. And as a regular part of reports, we'd always hear from the liaisons. Now, maybe we'd be, no report tonight, no report, but this involved more of the school board members in the discussion. We'd like to hear from all of the board members more frequently than we have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. Mrs. Duffy was the only speaker signed up this evening. We'll move on to board comments. Are there comments from board members this evening?
Real quickly, the Westerville Comprehensive Plan, if you are interested in Westerville, I encourage you to attend that. I didn't say this when she was up there making the presentation, but I've had three people corner me over this past week saying, you need to be at this meeting. So, I'm just like turning it around and saying, you need to be at this meeting. And so, if you can attend one or three, that'd be awesome. Bart, I just, you know, I don't know. Bart just continues to do a very solid job for us in our finances, and our forecasts are, we are very blessed, and I'm thankful for how he watches over, and I'm thankful to the people that pay their taxes. I've spoken about Cindy in other forums and won't belabor that, but I just, it's a sad, it's a sad thing for me, and I'm grateful that she's no longer struggling. But I'll continue to miss her. Peg, am I allowed to say her name?
Yes.
Peg? I had forgotten if I could say a name. Hey, thank you for, hey, sorry. Thank you for speaking about the liaison. Really, I want to think through that, how to utilize that and to speak out of that, the liaison positions that at least I have. So, that's a good reminder. Thank you for the person who wrote the anonymous epilogue, and thank you for sharing that.
Other comments?
Yeah, I think first administrative point, and the point about the liaison responsibility is an excellent one. Only out of a lack of knowledge on what I was supposed to be doing, I just did exactly what I know Cindy did, which was in Facilities and Operations, I immediately jumped in and started having conversations with community leaders in Westerville School Government, Genoa Township, a number of other locations. However, it didn't come with a playbook, and it also didn't come with, at least until I heard the comment, any kind of formal expectations around reporting out, which I think is an excellent observation, excellent point of feedback. I think we will probably collectively take that away and determine how we can do a better readout of our responsibilities in that space. It's an interesting meeting for me this evening. First, you may have seen, there was a little of exchange of an award and a handshake there. I am very, very happy to see Drew Mantenex get this award. I am very fortunate to be one of Drew's Boy Scout leaders, and it has been really, really cool having him at Troop 64. So, that was neat. The losses these past couple of weeks for the school district have left an indelible impression, and they will for a very, very long time. As I mentioned, you know, my son was shocked to learn that Mr. Jukowski had passed away. He left such a tremendous impression on Westerville North High School graduates, that I'm still staggered by the number of people that tell me that their only desire in life was to see him leave this office and go back to Westerville North. So, a big impact. And just simply because I'll be unable to, you know, share any deep thoughts about Cindy without being able to finish, I will say that I just am tremendously thankful for the opportunity to sit for the remainder of her term. This is her seat. And I just look forward to serving in a way that shows how much I truly respect and honor her.
Other comments?
I just want to echo the congratulations to Drew, and it's, it was wonderful to hear that he's also a Boy Scout, because he's certainly being trained well, and I'm always glad to hear that. So, congratulations. Keep on the straight and narrow, and listen to your leader, I guess. But, and I'm not going to belabor all the, you know, the deaths that we have had. That is just more than I could sit through two Saturdays, almost. And so, you know, they will be missed, and we will always remember them, both of them, working with them. So, I guess just bless them as they have their journey.
So Drew, you know how proud I am of you, and I have known you for many years, and how close dyslexia is to my heart. And you are such a bright young man, and to have already at your age figured out exactly how you learn and what you need, I could just applaud all day. I am so impressed with you. So, keep it up, though. Keep it up. You're going to high school. You can do this. And I can't wait to see what you end up doing in life, because I know it's going to be amazing. And as part of my liaison position, which I feel like I am constantly telling you guys what's going on, I will do my community service announcements. First Time Riders tomorrow, July 29th, at Whittier Elementary School, our Transportation Department is hosting the First Time Riders. So, come at 9:00 a.m. You can stay till noon. You get to explore a bus, learn about bus safety, ride on a bus, and meet Buster the bus. So, I'll be there. Come check it out. Also, Wednesday, August 6th, Children's Hospital will be providing their mobile care unit to the children in our community to get required immunizations and other medical services. They're going to be at Charrington Elementary School from 9:00 to noon, and then 1:00 to 4:00. And again, that's on August 6th. And if you need further information, go to our website. There's so much loss, and it is, as you can tell, I'm struggling. Each and everyone will deeply be missed, and we will carry on, and we have such an amazing school district because of these people. And I promise to keep educating myself and fighting for the kids of this district. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Mantenex, you have so much ahead of you. And what's wonderful is-